This conference will now be recorded.
All right, I will call to order this meeting of the joint meeting of the Select Board and Finance Committee with the Fire Money Charter Company. President for the Select Board, Susan Cooper and Frank Abbott. For the Finance Committee, Eileen Marcus and Jeff Zimmerman. For the Fire Company, Sean Trion. This is my text. Kevin, whose last name I knew only moments ago.
Wes, Wes.
Rico.
Both east of Simeon.
Simeoni, I love it, and Del Martin, and it sounds like maybe Roger at the moment.
Very good.
Yes. Roger McDonald for the Finance Committee. And Melissa No, time minister here. All right, hold on, hold on, hold on. Thank you. All right. I'm turning it over to you guys because it's early your show. It's showtime.
With your permission and indulgence, I've got kind of a few, it's probably five or six minutes of kind of an introduction just to sort of frame the way we're thinking about things. That's what made it that way. And also let me just say, so Wes said it. So last year, the Fire Company asked me if I'd help out with the appeals letter because I'm a writer and communications guy. And one conversation led to the next. And they brought me into their conversations around long-term strategic planning. And then really as part of that informal role, I'm here today to help present some of these ideas. And also one note for the record, and you touched on this already. Just so we're all reminded then, because this is a public meeting, there's a, I want to come back to this distinction that we always have to keep in mind between the Fire Company and the Fire Department. So towns, life-saving and firefighting involve these two entities, right? The Fire Department is a department of town. The department owns the equipment, including fire trucks, PPE, rescue boat, et cetera. The Fire Company is a nonprofit comprised of the members, the firefighters. And the nonprofit owns the buildings and the grounds. And the department, again, is funded by tax letting, and then the nonprofit is not. So so why are we here? Obviously, we're here for the lease negotiation. And that's just a due and in fact, an overdue piece of town business that we need to get to. And again, this is to clarify the public record, the town leases space from the Fire Company, which owns the building, right? In order to house the Fire Department as PPE, et cetera. The lease covers, the current lease covers the garage and basement storage in the firehouse, approximately fifty-three-hundred square feet, about three thousand square feet on the apparatus floor or garage, and about twenty-three-hundred square feet in basement. So that's broadly what we're talking about. But we also, we're here to talk about something bigger because in preparing for this, for this meeting, which these guys have been working on for quite a long time now, the Fire Company has identified a more fundamental problem. And we want to share with you that problem and also share some fire analysis that sort of helps us understand what this problem is and open you up to our thinking. And then, you know, hopefully sort of join in this shared conversation about solutions for the pretty obvious reason that our long-term interests align and our long-term actions need to coordinate. So the analysis, three key points. One, we've analyzed our financial needs, both immediate and long-term, and we can get into those in a minute. Two, looking, we've looked at all of our fundraising since 2015, and we've really gotten down to a granular level. And three, we've discovered that only a small fraction of households in Monterey are carrying the weight of this vital town service. And that's really the core problem that we have discovered, that's the core reality that we've discovered and that we want to be open about and that we want to kind of base this conversation on. We're underfunded. It's just as simple as that. In addition, the contributions from town residents are really deeply inequitable. The Fire Company safeguards life and property, right? That's the stated declared purpose of the Fire Company on the website. Town residents want that. They want life-saving. They want firefighting services. In fact, they mandate it. And yet, the cost of providing these services is going up and up and up and up. This won't come as any surprise to anyone in this room. But the voluntary donations from residents are no longer keeping face. They're no longer paying for the service that residents mandate. These guys consequently are just exhausted. And they're also stressed out totally, right? They're exhausted by trying to raise money. They're not fundraisers, they're firefighters, right? And they're, they're trying to make ends meet, yet they're too short. And they really are worn down emotionally and psychologically because they can't make the ends meet. And it's not anything they're doing, it's not a problem that they're making. They're problem solvers, but this is a problem that's not that they're making and they can't, they can't get it done on their own.
Just a quick question since I'm kind of new to these discussions. The Fire Company is a nonprofit. The firefighters are affiliated with the Fire Company. Is that correct? As volun, how does that work?
The firefighters are
They're associated with the town.
With, okay, because that's
That's what makes it complicated.
You had me up until that point, right? You had me up until, because I thought you were saying the firefighters are exhausted from the fundraising that they're doing for the company.
Yes.
So that's what I'm, just helping through that.
Yes, so the Fire Department is a town department, right?
Right.
Funded by that.
Right.
The Fire Company, which is the, which is the members.
It's the members, that's okay.
Which is the members. And the Fire Company, comprised of members, owns the building and the ground.
And the members of the Fire Company are the firefighters.
Correct. That's what, so I had that right, yes.
And I, a subsequent question to that, because also, what was the genesis of this? Was it always that way? Were they ever together? Does anyone know, like, when the split happened?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of a, it's sort of a long history. And to be honest, I've been around these guys for a year and I still don't I'm not sure that I can concisely explain it.
Okay.
It was a decision about forty-some years ago. It's a little bit unusual, but it's not that unusual. In fact, if you look across small towns in New England, you know, this is, this is a this is a structure, a kind of two-entity structure that you come across. And it provides, you know, there's the department and there's, and there's the company. And I mean, if you want, I can kind of do a little research from these guys after our meeting and really kind of break that down into a kind of a short, you know.
I'm thinking it just might give some clue as to the separation and some other
I'm going to throw a totally different thing out there.
So that's what I'm asking.
I have no particular opinion on this, but I just want to throw out the idea that would we want to undo that?
Well, that's why
I don't, I have no idea if it's a good idea or not. It might be a terrible idea. I don't, I'm just throwing it out there as something like, would life be easier if we did that? Or harder? I don't even know.
The answer, listen, it's something that we've asked ourselves, right? And in the spirit of this conversation that we've been having internally and that we want to bring to this shared table, is try to look at it from all angles and to try to put a lot of options on the table. And I guess I've got two, I've got two thoughts on that. One is the, does the town want to be in charge of, of like running or handling the building? One, and
I know I do, but
You know, it actually has, this has been a great system for forty years. It is a little unusual, right? There's an echo that bring them, that has to be established occasionally. You know, we're here, we got to sort of figure these things out. But these guys are really, they're the pride of Southern Berkshire County firefighting. They really are. They're the best of the best. And we're going to talk about regionalization at least passively in a minute here. But in a sense, regionalization is already underway, and these guys are the leaders of it, right? So the five-town mutual aid agreement, five-town, four-town? Four-town. Well, mutual aid is a broad
Yeah.
You know, that is already a sort of regionalization, de facto regionalization. And these guys are the leaders of it. They're, they're the ones who train, you know, the other towns. So the, the system is a little unusual, you know, and there are multiple moving parts that have to align. But it's worked pretty well. These guys are proud and rightly so, their work. I think we as a town can be proud of their work, so.
And if they want to, I was not suggesting I was in favor of it.
Yeah.
I'm just throwing that out there as something to consider, and clearly you have been considering it. I mean, I am, and if it ain't broke, don't fix it kind of girl. And if there are good reasons to leave it as it is, I respect that. I just wanted to be clear that if that was something you guys thought would be better, I don't think that we would, I certainly wouldn't oppose it. I'm not coming in there to try and take it over. You guys want to do it, like, that's great for me. So I, but I'm just putting it out there that should there come a time where you guys thought that was a better choice, it'd be, you know.
And frankly, that's why I asked the history. Was there a reason? What was the reason? Does it exist? And is there another structure that could, you know, more serve the needs of both?
Right. Let me circle back to that, let me circle back to that point again in just a minute because it's really, it is a good point. And I think I can speak to it in kind of a maybe a broader, somewhat broader sense without getting into the grand details.
Yeah, I was just going to say, let's not go down Marabou Hall.
Yeah.
Let's flip.
Yeah. I just wanted to say, when she were love, that's someone like you, so only if it's helpful.
Oh, yeah, only if it's helpful.
I'll be to this council later, just let's
Go for it.
So this is, so now fundraising analysis, this is more of the fundraising analysis. So since 2015, fundraising has been pretty consistent. Contributions are consistently low. The steak roast is a beloved summertime event. These guys love doing it as a resident. I love going to it. I think it's a great event to highlight the year. Doesn't raise much money. You know, it raised about ten thousand bucks. There's confusion among residents as to what that is. I asked a friend of mine in town if she had sent in her check in response to the appeal letter yet. And she said, oh, I haven't done that. But you know what? I'm going to buy a steak roast ticket instead. So just bear that in mind while I read some of this, some of this more information. In recent years, the appeals letter goes, the appeals letter goes out to about eight-hundred-and-seventy-five households on average. On average, about one-third of households respond with a donation of any size. To have a sense of that range is the size of gifts has gone, has ranged between five dollars and five thousand dollars.
What's the percentage responding, thirty-three?
About one-third, thirty-three percent respond at all.
It's on the letters, right.
Seventy-three-and-a-half percent, so three-quarters of people who respond in any way, give less than a hundred-and-fifty dollars. So in other words, only about twenty-six-and-a-half percent are giving a hundred-and-fifty dollars or more.
Right.
Over the past five appeals, appeal letters, on average, only thirty-four households, thirty-four out of eight-hundred-and-seventy-two gave over two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So that's three-point-nine percent are giving at that highest level. I'm happy to share these numbers with you afterwards. So just for fun, we did a little like back of the envelope calculation. What if a hundred percent of donors gave at the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar level? That'd be about two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars a year. You know, we wouldn't be having this conversation because the lease would be a dollar a year because the company would be fully funded. The building would be in prime shape. The, the, the steak roast would be just a community event. The, what do you want to say? They'd be, you know, squirreling away money for any future expansion. And they'd be squirreling away a pretty significant fund for future replacement of building, which I'm going to get to in a second. But of course, you know, that's, that's, that's just to give you a sense of like, that's what two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars a year would look like. If a hundred percent of contributions at a hundred-and-fifty-dollar level came in, that'd be about a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars a year, which is now kind of in the ballpark of what, what seems like sort of adequate funding, like full funding, right? Don't get too hung up on that number, but it's just to say, a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from every household would like, things would be really great. I'm sorry, a hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Just making sure.
You know, things would be really great. However, again, only four percent of households are giving at the highest level. Only twenty-six-and-a-half percent are giving at the, at the hundred-and-fifty-dollar level. And yet, twenty-five, you know, a quarter of the town gives at an adequate level, but a hundred percent of residents expect, and rightly so, that these guys are going to show up if they have an emergency.
And risk their life.
And risk their life.
Even if their driveway doesn't support our truck going through it. One of my favorite pet peeves.
And there's a real, there's an important question of like, why? Like, what's going on here? Why is this happening? And I think this circles back to your, to your question. The reason is that the world has changed, right? It's just as simple as that. So when years passed, going back to forty years ago, to the founding of the, of the Fire Company, the fire service, I'm sorry, the Fire Company was buoyed by a spirit of volunteerism. They had more members. They had more donations coming in from the town. They had more hands, they had more community support. In years past, donations were higher and costs were lower. And I think there's one data point here that really tells the whole story. This year, in 2023, the year that I helped out with the, with the appeals letter, the overall number of contributions declined nearly forty percent versus pre-pandemic levels.
That's crazy.
Now, interestingly, because the per, because the average donation went up pretty substantially, the, the number, the top-line number remained about the same, and it's about thirty-eight-thousand dollars this year.
The number of people that contributed.
But the number of donors this year was down forty percent versus pre-pandemic levels. And why is that? You know, there are more new people who moved in, who don't know the drill, who don't understand how, you know, it works around here. You know, there are more same-home owners. The demographic of the town has really changed over the years. And, and I, and I think that's, that's why in the end, like the, you know, the engine no longer short enough to, long enough to meet. It's just a different town these days. So the, the building is, at this point, forty-two years old. It looks pretty great from, from the road, especially in the holiday season, all lit up. But it's worth bearing in mind that it's, it was built in nineteen-eighty-two. And so, you know, it does, it needs repairs and it certainly with its age. In another forty years, which is the sunset of the current fifty-year roof, it'll be eighty-some-one years old and likely need to be replaced or very substantially refurbished. Probably there'll need to be some kind of, you know, modest expansion, given just the way that everything seems to get bigger. All the equipment seems to get bigger over time. And this is not really what we're talking about today, but just to give you an idea of certain numbers, you know, the, the current replacement cost on seventy-eight-hundred square feet comes out to about, estimated about six million dollars, you know, today. And that, that estimate is giving, is using the per-square-foot cost budget projections for the lead project that was just over a group. Again, we don't have to worry about that number too precisely in this, just because I want to make a point, which is that that six million dollars projected out for years for two, you know, two-and-a-half percent inflation comes up at, hold on.
Two-and-a-half percent? That's very modest inflation rate.
Sorry, I lost you from, what are we talking about? Building?
To cover, if you had to build a new building.
Oh, you had to build a new building.
Of that size, based on what it costs them per-square foot for the building.
It comes out to about
The fire department, that's where I lost you, like, when, where's the lead building?
Lead mass is just
Lead mass, too. You're doing a comparison. I was like, when did that become the lead building?
He's talking about in forty years now.
So in forty years, in twenty-sixty-four dollars, it would cost about twenty-one million dollars. And if you count in the potential small expansion, we're at about twenty-five million dollars in twenty-sixty-four dollars.
Right.
So again, but that's not even really what we're talking about here. I mean, like, that, that's a real issue, and I think we need to address it. We're, we're really talking about today the, the sort of the current situation. You know, how do we establish a lease that's realistic with current costs, right? Current operational costs? And that also covers the, some of the deferred maintenance, which is, I've got a little little list here of capital expenditures that need to be addressed. And also, you know, we've got some, we had a conversation around, like, what's the methodology to arrive at a rational lease? You know, seventy-thousand dollars a year is not, not enough. And as I've, you know, as I've sort of indicated by graphics of these numbers, it's got to have to be substantially more than that. And, and that's, that's just the reality of it. But we also, you know, we wanted to sort of have this conversation about, like, how do, how do we get there? The I mean, should I, should I just keep going?
That pause was ominous.
There, we, we've tried to think about, we've tried to think about this from a couple of different directions. Because we have been focused, early on, we were focused on this four-year replacement. So you're like, what if, you know, what if you, like, have you tried to sort of strategize that? And we came out with a number of like, well, and we can really get grander with the model, which we want to see it, but that's the whole point.
We don't know.
You know, it comes out to about a hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand dollars a year would cover all of current expenses and also be putting away money for future replacements, right? That's just one way of thinking about it. Another way of thinking about it, commercial, you know, rental comps. Very hard to find comps, exact comps in the area. There's some interesting, there's a garage in Great Barrington right next to the, is it Snowco Station? Their rental on that was Stuart Lippman, by the way, who's been helping us with some of the math and is also just a very smart, you know, kind of wise person. He, he was able to find that comp, and it was over ten dollars a square foot. I mean, obviously that's in Monterey, I'm sorry, in Great Barrington. But let's just say, two-hundred, two dollars and fifty cents per square foot, kind of blended rate between the garage and the basement storage, that comes out to a hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand dollars a year, right? Or there's some kind of proprietary formula, which I think probably is what we're going to, what we need to do, that has to do with a sum of, what is the annual insurance cost? Right? There are no taxes, right? So we're, we're good on that. What are the annual utilities? What are the annual operating costs? What are the annual maintenance costs?
Debt service?
I think we, there's no debt service at the moment.
It'll be you guys, but for us, I mean, equipment.
Yeah, well, that's separate. It's just the building, it's not the equipment.
Yes, it is.
Because when you
The town owns the equipment.
You know what I'm going, the town doesn't own the building. Yeah, I know.
I also, I'm going to, I'm going to put up kind of flag the, the opportunity here for some administrative costs, by which I mean bookkeeping and audits. You know, these, these guys have, they operate at the highest professional levels in their training and on their fire calls. They're not bookkeepers, you know? But I think that the, the same kind of level of, like, professional bookkeeping and audits that are applied in the school level here should also be in place up there. It's been a money question. You know, they don't have money for a thousand dollars audit a year, whatever it costs. So that, you know, that sum should, I think, be part of the proprietary formula. There should be some kind of a modest emergency kitty. You know, they don't, they don't need to, CapEx is one thing, but I don't think we, we, we want a situation where they're coming to you every time they need to repaint the bathroom, right? So there should be some sort of annual contribution that is, that goes into that emergency kitty, which will apply to these, you know, future, future CapEx issues if it, if it remains unspent. So, you know, I, I don't have, I don't think we have a hard and fast number here. That's really what this process is about, is figuring out what that number is. Obviously, like, you know, some, the CapEx is part of that as well. You know, there's like the, the annual expenses and the CapEx. So like, that, that's really where we are. I'm sorry, I know that was much more than five or six minutes.
Great.
But it, it gives you some of the, some of the broad background and also gives you some insight, I hope at least, into the way we've been trying to think about this and kind of take it apart as a problem. You know, they're problem solvers. They're not financial people. They're, they're not fundraisers, but they're problem solvers, and they really have put a lot of intense focus and many hours into this problem over, you know, the past several months. And these are some, some approaches. We're totally open to other approaches, but like, let's, you know, what is, what's the, what's the right approach? And I'm just going to pass this around to the, I promise I'm going to stop talking. These are the, the CapEx, this is the deferred maintenance essentially.
I never heard of CapEx.
It's public aviation, I think.
What? I know FedEx. I don't know CapEx. I kind of like it.
If I could just draw, if you can just draw a line from the apron, the heating, the outride floor, the heating system in the apron, all, it seems they're all nonprofit. The outride floor is the floor of the garage. The heating system, when they built the garage forty-two years ago, they put in a, what do you call it? A radiant heat system. Two of those coils.
Six.
Two of six. Two of six. Have failed. And then the apron is kind of like part of that. You kind of bundle all of that up together. Because it's heating and it has to do with the, you know, kind of the what do you want to say? The maintenance and, and safeguarding of the town equipment. That really is the number one top priority.
And to fix it, do you have to jackhammer the indoor and do that? So the whole thing, you got to do a do-over. So this is a weird question to ask, but would you, given how it's functioned, would you guys choose to go with the same thing? Or is it like, we're not so happy with that, we're going to change it? Or what's the
Yeah, but it's forty, it's forty-year-old radiant.
Right, of course.
So what are the black pipes that were in there? So now it was very antiquated system.
Is that
Was that to reduce costs? Did you do your heating to reduce overall heating costs? Or you just thought
Yeah, it's more efficient, so that's why they did that.
Okay, so that's the reason.
But so with the new systems, what's their lifespan like? Are they, do they work better? Because that's not always the case.
They say they work just as efficiently and better.
Or better? And do they have a similar lifespan theoretically?
Supposedly, yeah. I guess that's a better thing.
Well, I know, it's just like, anyone who's bought an appliance in the last fifteen years, especially the last ten years, knows that the kitchen aid that's in my kitchen from the seventies still works if I could get a replacement percutane. The Sears that I bought five years ago, not so much. You basically have to ditch the machine and get a new one in five years. So I'm like, I'm only throwing that out there, but you guys do your research. I, I know you do. So that's always my concern is that
At the end of the day, the floor needs, still needs to be repaired.
Yes. But it's just a question of whether you do radiant or not, yeah.
I was going to say, from the, I mean, the Select Board can respond. I think there are a lot of detail we can get into.
Which probably aren't, don't make sense to do right now.
Right, for the Finance Committee, first of all, I want to thank you. I mean, it was rational, it was coherent, it was well researched, good job finding Wes, you know, you, Wes. And, um, you know, it's really appreciated. I just want to give you a perspective because, you know, I'm, I'm kind of new to the Finance Committee, maybe a year and a half. And, and we spent the last year and a half kind of trying to bring into alignment some of the, you know, Frank was on with me before, trying to clean up some of the kind of things that weren't working before and to really understand where the town money's going. And everything that you talked about, you know, I have been almost a nays, you know, not a naysayer, almost, you know, too loud about, it's not going to keep going good. Our needs are outpacing our ability. We just all see, I mean, I saw a thirty percent tax increase, you know, just to see the tax increase. People aren't giving, and the proportion of second homeowners to first homeowners, nine new houses at a million each. And, you know, my favorite pet peeve, we had to buy a new truck because it doesn't fit up their driveway. So why don't we have a rule about their dri, you know, there are so many issues with what's happening in the town and people's responsibility, you know, that they think a coffee truck is what makes this town the town. So I have, I really stand with you on that. And the fundraising, unfortunately, the library's seen the same thing. You know, most nonprofits have seen the same thing, unfortunately. You're not alone in that, which gets me to two or three of my issues. So we understand that picture overall, and you are hitting on exactly what worries the Finance Committee about the budget, the structural balance of this budget. As needs go up, as mandates go up, as supply chain and economic issues, as staffing issues change, we don't keep on having the ability. So I want to give you a perspective that we're up against, and I think the approach is exactly right. I think it's got to be a two or three-pronged approach. It has to do, you know, with the structure and the relationship. It has to do with the town and the engagement. And then it has to do with, I don't know, something else. There's always three things. But I just want to give you a perspective. Our budget will be around five-million-eight-hundred-thousand, five-million-eight-hundred-thousand dollars this year, maybe, is what we're looking at. As of now, the request from the Fire Department that doesn't include debt service is about seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand. So that is about, I think, fifteen or so percent of the budget, just to give you an understanding. But that doesn't tell our story because you have to look at the budget in terms of taking out education. Because education is mandated, it's one-point-eight million, it's not movable. So we have to take that, that one-point-eight million out of the five-point-eight million, that leaves three, three-point-two million about. That makes currently what we're giving the Fire Department, almost twenty-five percent of our tax letting funds. I'm not saying you don't deserve it. I'm not saying it shouldn't be more. I'm not saying it's not going to be good money. I'm saying that's what we're up against. We have every other department that has needs, aging buildings, right? All of these things, and you're already getting a quarter of our discretionary funds. And that's why I think the solution has to do a lot with the town, with the relationship, and I think usage of the building. I think you're sitting, you know, on an incredible space that, you know, might have more facility. You know, we talk about the kitchen, like, should it be an emergency kitchen? Should it be a trauma kitchen? Should it be a, you know what I mean? There are many ways, and I understand it should never interfere with the life-saving duties that you do. But I think that we really have to think about what are other passive or other revenue streams? Because I don't think the town is going to be able to support almost thirty percent of our budget for this service. So that's why I say, I, I mean, if we, if we So that's why I say, I, I mean, if we, if that could be all we can, we will. But that's why I think there is a huge education. And, you know, when we meet with the guys on code, we talk about, we spoke with this Sean, you know, last year in the fire truck. So we're buying the small gray truck that you need, but we're basically buying it because it doesn't go up people's driveways because they chose to build their driveway smaller. So how, what can we do to make the driveway bigger? I understand you might need the truck anyway, but the point is, these are the same houses that aren't giving you sharing them.
So I just, we're freaking out because the budget jump's gonna be huge.
So.
This is what we're hearing, right?
So that, so I just wanna tell you, you know, we're not saying no, we're just saying, so that's the box where, yeah. And that box needs to be set to have these complications and, and.
And I don't think it's about us saying, it's about what.
Yes.
I don't want the town to decide because the majority of voters that are there will approve. But we, the, the select board approves what the number is in the budget. So that the town sees, that the town approves the budget. So if we have, and the finance committee just makes a suggestion to the, to the select board, like, here's what we think. But, and, and all three of us, Roger. She's the, she's the senior.
The one leading the line up here.
But my concern is we go into that town meeting and a feeling erupts in the town that based on the tax increases that people have seen this year. And then they, and, and my concern is I wouldn't want the residents to clamp down at that point and then wind up with a no.
I, I totally hear that and I think all of these guys have, are, are thinking that as well, that, that the, this request, this request is being made through, um, the select board and finance committee. It's a request that's being made of, uh, the residents.
Yeah.
Right? And I think we, we understand that there is a, um, there's a need, let's say, to communicate to the, the residents some version of what I told you today, which is the reality of the situation.
So I think beyond the reality, just to finish my thought, beyond the reality of the situation, which I think you communicated very well and clearly the importance, no matter what we talk about, the importance of fire services, department, company, whatever. But a fire prevention and of course dealing with actual fires, which can come not only in a house, but in the woods and in a car accident and whatever else is, you all know better than I, is crucial. And, and that is not, so the issue is not one of priorities.
Or not understanding the need.
Or not understand, but I think the challenge, part of the challenge is for us to be problem solving. So that when we go to the town, we have a methodology, whatever it involves, that makes sense. Are going to support the investment. But we don't wind up in that. Rainstorming up to figure out what are some options and what's the option.
And I just wanna finish my thought. I think one of the numbers you said is so fascinating and it's a big jumping off point. And that's the hundred fifty per household. When you break it down like that, you know, I'm thinking search, edit, actually, you know, we don't wanna be attacking the district. But a hundred fifty four per household to, to get us, I don't know what that does, how much. But to get us close to this life-saving service that we all agree on seems like, when you break it down like that. So I think, um, you know, not that we're gonna sell it today, I, I love what Jeff just laid out. But at the very minimum, right, like, I would write some letter to the Monterey News about how, how the fundraising didn't work. And the other thing is, um, last year the finance committee instituted a budget briefing, which was pretty well attended, I remember. And I would suggest we're happy to include a briefing, you know, back-to-back with you to help you guys or include a bigger portion of that since we get a turnout and to explain whatever we come up with. So you don't have to call your own forum or whatever it is.
And I know in previous years, it's often been the case that, like, stuff comes up and everybody like howls and talks and then they just prove everything. But we just have to be cognizant that the day may come where, you know, where people feel like they can. And I don't, I wanna, like, and I get, everybody knows, you got, you got your tax bill too, didn't you? Right, yeah, so it's not like we don't get what the issues are.
I wanna give you one more data point. We're all familiar with what's happening at Southern Church Volunteer Ambulance Board. And, you know, this is, I, I owe the select board a letter for them to sign. You know, we, Susan and I spent a lot of time on it, Susan spent a lot of time when we first got that fifty-four thousand dollar bill. We analyzed it, we analyzed our usage, you know, we're the big gorilla, believe it or not, in the room because of our EQV, our home values. And we tried to negotiate it, it was fifty-four, and we said, this service is valuable, we love them, we don't want them to go under. Even though they have eighteen marijuana shops that are giving them revenue, we don't. But we wanna be, you know, we wanna be a team player and we're gonna do that. This year we got seventy-five thousand, a letter for seventy-six thousand?
I don't know what it was.
My blizzard will look it up. But it was close to seventy thousand. And what I said, and that's why I owe the select board a letter from the finance committee is, oh my God, we understand why they need it. We understand their problems. But if that's gonna jump twenty thousand a year, once again, they're, they're at a huge percentage of our budget that we can't sustain. And so we have to also look at the out years and the capital X and, you know, whatever it is. So I think that that model, they had the same problem, they turned to us. Some interest in regionalization, I'm interested in, you know, that we're leading the way and what are the other solutions?
So regionalization is, um, as I was saying earlier, in, in, well, let me, let me first say, let's, let's understand a distinction that the chief has, has helped me see between regionalization and fire district.
Yes.
So regionalization, as I was saying, is already kind of de facto underway. Because, you know, through the mutual aid, um, agreement and, and we're kind of, and that's, that's really like a conversation among the chiefs. You know, like, you know, here's, here's how we're gonna do things, is everyone on board? We're on board, okay, here's the plan. Whereas the fire district, and Sean, you're probably gonna need to help step in here and sort of, and give me the right language. But the fire district is more of a, uh, legal agreement between towns that, um, requires voter approval in each of the towns. Because it may also incur, um, a tax, um, you know, a contribution, a financial contribution from the towns into the district. Have I, have I at least hit some broad strokes there?
Create a structure that is governed basically by the same amount of people here versus each town having six or eight people involved in the whole thing, which just gets out of control. So, and at that point, you can have more control over what trucks you buy and you streamline. It's more of a streamlined process versus Monterey buys this and others buy that, same stuff, yes. It's all over the place and you're just, we're all spending money that, I won't say we're duplicating, but we're, it's, we're all going in different directions.
And the fire district can have its own board, it's basically.
Correct, yes.
So you're saying you like that or you don't like that?
I think it's a must to regionalize, that's the only way to do it.
Because I was gonna say, the other thing that you constantly remind us, especially when you do DPW director, is what, we have thirty-three miles of road? So like, if fifty-three, what's the point, we have fifty-three, we're fifty-three miles of road, you know, it's not an answer for us, like, to have someone else answer our call. It happens, but it's, you know, the time is of the essence. So, I mean, that's also, we understand that, you know, you really helped us to see that. So we understand the boxes and, and it's a good question, how do we get there?
And, you know, if it, if, um, I mean, this, this conversation has soaked up so much of their energy in the past year. Their, their second, like, their next two priorities, I think, are regionalization and recruitment. And, um, and also, um, other types of, of long-term strategic planning, like there, you've, you know, they've had some conversations that I've been part of around, um, some sort of, um, you know, like, uh, civilian advisory board to bring in more people like me, who, I'm, you know, listen, I'm not game to turn up for a fire call. I, I wanna help out the fire company. And they're, you know, as part of long-term strategic planning, it would be helpful to have some, you know, some other kind of support around them, some other kind of, you know, rewards to draw in resident participation. So, like, they, they, all of this stuff is on their mind, right? But the, again, the financial issue, um, sort of day-to-day, because it's the most urgent, kind of has pushed aside a, a lot of other stuff which is essential and important. And in a way more interesting and fun, right? I, I asked Dell a question the other day about, you know, like, what, what's the, where's, where, you know, what takes up the most of their time or whatever it is? And he was like, this is the stuff that takes up all of their headspace, all of their headspace. You know, like, all, the calls are, you know, like, that's what they do. And that's, he, and what did you say, Dell, something like, you know, if we hadn't spent so many hours, um, you know, thinking about this, he would be thinking about, he'd be sort of daydreaming about, how do we make, you know, response more efficient? How do we improve training? You know, how do we reach out to, um, more young people in the area for recruitment? You know what I mean? And also, I mean, they've got jobs and they've got families and, you know what I mean? I mean, there's, there's only so much bandwidth that, that any of us has. So, so regionalization is, is like high on the list, but it's the second thing on the list beneath this.
But you just got the third leg of what we need to focus on, the relationship, financial, right? The town engagement? And then what is the other types of support we can give besides financial or getting the town engaged, right? Like, what does it look like? You know, the guy asks the question, like, can we get him like a senior work-off officer to do his books? And they're like, no, it's, it's a nonprofit, not a this, but someone gets a tax exemption. I'm thinking about really big picture, like recruiting people, tax credits, you know, different things that are much more aggressive than, and I don't know what's legal or not, but I think that's the kind of stuff we need to be looking at.
I mean, for sure, like, uh, you know, there's a civilian board of whatever sort, you know, one person can communicate. One person can focus on recruitment, one person can focus on grants, you know, like researching grants. One person could focus on whatever it could like.
Doing your books and all your accounting, so you don't have to do it. Because I'd rather, I mean, I'd rather have you researching what kind of truck you need or what kind of nozzle or what kind of training than, than entering stuff in a spreadsheet. I mean, that's not the best use, you're checking it to make sure they didn't make an error maybe, but.
So what do we think are, like, how do we start to untangle this? Do we get a small working group? Do we?
There's a couple, uh, to answer your question, we've already started, but we've had, Roger and I have had two meetings with them. There's, uh, there's warrant money we wanna convert, uh, in February when we have the town meeting into lease payment. And there's. Excuse me?
We have a town meeting, is that right?
Yeah. But anyway. So, but, so that would help them to start addressing this work. And then I think, you know, what I'd love to, not you, but the others, you know, can we start meeting twice a week? Just sort of, like, what are the priorities, how much money is coming? You know, based on legal advice, you have the lease and then you have the work, the town giving them money to complete work in a, during the lease agreement. So they manage the work and then they don't have to pay prevailing wages. If we manage, if the town manages the work and pays for it out of the town, then we have to pay prevailing wages. So it'd be like, you know, this would, you guys work out, this is what we think the lease payment should be. Here's X amount of dollars, we're gonna cover this in the agreement. You and I've had a conversation yesterday about how we would structure some of this, what else we had put in there. Because there, you know, the legal was a multiple-year contract. You and I talked about having a review, you know, certain dates, going on, what else do we need? What else do we want to accomplish this year? Because select board members, finance board members will come and change. You put it in the legal document and there's a responsibility on both parties to say, okay, this is part of our agreement. You can put a cover letter to the, well, I used to do, put a cover letter to the lease agreements and other contracts. Here's the, you know, here's the, here's the, this is our mission, is what we're in those different stages. So, you know, I, you know, Kevin and I talked yesterday, you know, because there is a turnover, you know, we, you know, we could, you and I here two more years and we could, yeah, be supportive and then someone else comes in and says, I, you know, I'm not sure we do that. But we have to cure that spirit out. We have to legally, as far as make it known, this is our, this is our mission. You know, that it's gonna be give and take, we're gonna, we're gonna get through this, we're gonna give them the support that they need because it's a public safety issue, it's, you know, and that, um, I think the two meetings we've had have been very, they're after very high.
And I think having that kind of cover letter that sets out the reasoning behind the decision. I, I mean, I guess I'm just aware of how much institutional memory matters. Like, a lot of this stuff gets lost when you have so much turnover in boards and whatever, which, which we do. And it, it seems to be the way things are now. But the best way to combat that is to do exactly the sort of thing you did, laid out. To lay out the reasoning behind why something was done and why the people that signed it think it's important. Because it's a lot harder for the next person to come along, well, I don't know why this, well, here's exactly why it's there. You know, argue with that, so. I mean, it, there, these things are well thought out. And if we share that reasoning with people that come to see the agreement, the likelihood of people understanding the context and seeing the reasoning behind it's a lot higher.
And, and Greg, as you, as you mentioned, the, the agreement would also, um, write in certain reviews and sort of checks and balances.
Yeah, we're gonna, it's gonna be, it's give and take, it's, you know, it's hard to, it is standard typical. It's time-consuming but not difficult.
Well, you do it once and then it's.
Yeah, it is, and it, uh, so, you know, what I was hoping in the next, in the next start next week, we get together, we start doing it. I can start playing with some of the wording, um, you know, and we can, you know, because we, like I put in the email to you guys today, you know, we got, we got the operating budget, we got the capital budget, you know. When we give it more cash, we need to get that on the, the sheet, you know, so, so we, we need to start getting, you know.
And at the end of the day, are we talking about, like, a lot of numbers we're throwing around? I wanna make sure I'm on the right page still. I, my brain is tearing about one fifty K? Is that what we're talking about?
I, I would let, I would let you, let these guys do the numbers. I think you gotta remember about the lease, there hasn't been any increase in, I wanna say, five years, so, behind a ball.
For sure.
So I think, you know, they need to.
And we're trying to structure something that's gonna cover a more comprehensive picture.
It's like anything else, your home expense, you know, here's what it's costing you to run this operation. You know, this is where it starts. We talked about the insurance, making sure we have, you know, so they gotta go back to the insurance company and make sure they do it. I don't wanna put a number out there, I'd rather have them come and say, here's, here's our map. You know, it's, be, let it be data-driven. Here's our map, this is how we came up with it. And, and I, I, you know, it's like, you can't tell another man to do his accounting.
The, the other thing I would suggest, you know, we're, we're loads to do this, is to really think about the line items that you currently have in your budget and do they make sense anymore? Because I think if we're restructuring the agreement, we should really restructure that to reflect what the town's paying for or whatnot. I think that will help people understand that. Instead, we just put new numbers into those same category.
I, I think, I think it's all there. I think what we're running into though, um, at least from my point from the finance committee and the others is to everybody, it's, it's just a challenge financially. I mean, the, uh, fire department, what the fire department request is for this year, plus the purchase of a truck, plus this. It's a, it's a, it's a very difficult challenge when you look at the whole bucket of, of what is what's needed. I do believe that, um, that it is possible to, to get this done. I also think that, I, I, I understand, uh, you guys don't want to, you know, you, you aren't fundraisers. The fire company isn't fundraisers, I get that and I'm very appreciative of that. But I think there needs to be some give and take on how all this stuff works. Because I, I, I believe that we have everything that we need right now to move forward on this. And that, uh, but it's again, it's a challenge because it's, it's big money. That, looking to, to, um, to Eileen's point, as an overall budget, towards the overall budget, it's big money. But again, I believe that we have everything that we need to, to move forward, just what you said, I'd say.
I have just a thought and a question. I am agreeing with everything I'm hearing and I think we're all of one mind in terms of the importance of this being addressed. But I don't think we're just talking about this year. I think we're talking about the responsibility of the town for decades. And certainly for the next foreseeable future as well as beyond that. That leads me to my question, based on what you asked Susan early in the meeting. More from the standpoint of wanting to know the downsides of certain things, which is the way I usually work, like, what's wrong with this idea? Once I know what's wrong with it, then I can push it aside, perhaps push it aside and move on to more strategic thinking. What's the downside of re-merging the town and the company back together? Besides all the energy and love for the company and, and the psychological, who's talking? The psychological aspects of that is the psychological. But besides that emotional, psychological piece of it, from the dollars and cents point.
I don't know if there would be any chance of it.
You can answer that now.
We don't have to answer it now.
Yeah, but I, I think.
Right.
And two, also managing.
Well, I think there's, there's a question of managing, you know.
Yep.
I, I, my personal opinion is that's a team, that's a group that does something really well. And I don't feel like it's broken.
Right.
So don't fix it if it ain't broken. They need, they need financial support. There's a variety of reasons, you can't change history, there was Kevin pointed out, the world has changed, you know, voluntary donations, cost are completely reduced. And you take a look at it, you know, it's an aging building, you know, forty some years old. And it's just, you know, it's going to do this. And we can make these improvements in, in say incremental one, two years, whatever, but then it'll be, it'll flatten out, you know, there'll be others, but there probably won't, you know, there's, you know, you got a new floor and new heating system, you know, that's, hopefully you won't have to worry about it in your lifetime for that, you know. So, you know, so I, I, I just think, you know, you got to be careful when you combine it. And two, you know, my personal belief is, you know, this, this side of the table changes a lot. And there's, can always be that one person, you know. I think our job is to set up a system so they can be successful, with system and support.
Yeah, and I just want to follow up on Roger's point, which I think, you know, well, I go innocently. But now, oh, so, and that means that you have to disclose information about the nonprofit. Is there a mortgage? What's happening? What all those costs are? So is there a mortgage on the building?
No, their financial records, you can go search.
But they own it outright?
There, there's, you know, you go and do any, or any.
But you, you understand that.
That's why they're suggesting that they want, they need money and they're ready for an audit, so that you can.
Right, but I'm just saying, if you own the building, there's no mortgage. There are a lot of other options for a long-term solution, you know, maybe. So I think, you know, just to Roger's point, yeah, we can go back through all that, but all of that should be on the table, whether they merge or not, to really think about what makes the most sense. And is it make more sense if you own the building than if we do? Why? Why not? How do we cover it better? And I get the prevailing wage issue, but when you do a real financial analysis, prevailing wage issue, even though it's a nonprofit, you know, might be nothing compared to the grants or other things that we might be eligible to get if it's owned by the town, or the opposite, or the opposite, or the opposite.
I don't think, if we ever, the way it's set up, we've never been passed away from given grant.
Well, then I, I don't know, we don't know, that's what I'm saying. Especially under regionalization.
We're going to continue to work with the.
Yeah, that's what I, well, that's what I was hoping. We've had two meetings, and I think.
Thank you, Roger.
We're ready to get to the nitty gritty and, you know, crossing T's, dotting I's. I asked the lawyer, I haven't, he said he would, but he has not, at about, you know, five o'clock, would send me like a lease, and then, but we, we don't need to worry about, we need to worry about what the, like amendments are. This is what we'll give you money for. This is like year one, year two, you know, is there, you know, consumer price index goes up X percent, you know, stuff like that. We, those are our details, and then he'll do the standard stuff.
And, and just as a matter of procedure, I think y'all know this, and just as a reminder. So these are, the, whatever happens on this side of the table needs to be put to the full fire company.
Right.
And the fire company needs to build on it, prove it.
Yeah, just like we need to make that decision too, yeah.
And I think we probably should go through a couple of levels.
Interactions.
With the fire company. So first would be more of a kind of conceptual, you know, like, here's the framework that we're talking about. And then, you know, they'll take it, they'll go back to the fire company again with the more finalized.
But, but. Joint meetings for that.
We may. We need to be educated along the way, so.
We, you know, we have a budget to be, and that's why I said we might even have to be twice, which, you know, we need to get the numbers in there, which this is the new recent price, we need to get that in there. You know, some of the stock, you know, it won't go in fact of July, but, you know, by April, you know, we have to post a warrant two weeks before.
You've seen the budget cycle? You, you've got the, remember you have to.
Uh, yes.
Can I just say one thing that I think is really important? Because, because this is kind of groundbreaking, right? You're different, you're a quality, but the kind of analysis about, it's really a strategic plan for the town and you of what you'll need. So if I serve as a model, like with the library, the community center and other things moving forward, so I think it's really pretty document, it's really important to document it. And one of the things I really suggest you do is an all-in budget. I'm going to give you a Jewish mother example, because still, I don't know how to do it. You know, I work with a lot of founder for companies, and they say, this is what it costs to produce my product. This is the unit economics. I made chicken soup, I got the chicken, the soup, I got the celery, the carrots, the onion, the this, you know, the water, and this is the soup. No, it's your time, it's the driving to the store, it's the cost of the stove, it's the containers you put it in. I really think we need to see an all-in budget of the fire department, the fire company, the compensation, all in, the mowing, the this, let's look at it all in so we really know what side of the elephant is. Because right now, it's, it's in like four different places, and I've never seen an all-in number.
I agree, because we had the same issue with IT stuff, and I said, all over the budget. And then IT is taking a drastic increase, but insurance, so, you know, it's like, it's all over the map. I, I mean, I can, you know, offer my.
And I count people on the budget.
I'd also like to, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'd also like to suggest from a process standpoint, that it might make sense to have, as you do your thinking and the number crunching, as we look at that again, before we go to the town, before you go back to the whole fire company with proposals, in my experience, it could work better if all of us can come out of a series of meetings and say, you know what? To the people sitting around the table, this makes sense to the people sitting around the table. Because otherwise, what happens is, we go, the finance committee, there's really three entities sitting at this table, right? And the finance committee goes off, and the select board goes off, and the company goes off. And before you know it, we come back with three different versions of Ivy's chicken soup. And really, what I'm making, what I'm making is tacos.
But that's my point, that's why you, the Jewish mother, right, I mean, right.
As opposed to all of us coming out with one thing, one idea, that we all can stand behind. And at least as individuals, as residents of the town, as members of the community, of the company, of the committees that we serve on, the boards that we serve on, and be able to then say, you know what, we spent time doing this, and we've looked at it all which way, backwards and forwards, inside out. And at least the people sitting at this table all agree. That makes a stronger argument when you go back to the company and say, this is a model, and maybe it gets tweaked a little, when, when the finance committee meets and thinks by itself, when the select board meets, that then we all know that we, as, as vested parties in this process, not only because we live here, but because of how important it is, and how it's not just a one-off. This is not a one-off because you need new ladders, you know, whatever. This is not a one-off, this is a ten, twenty, thirty-year kind of thinking. In a year that people have been, you heard informally beforehand, you know, that my taxes have gone up by this percent, my taxes are up by, that people, that people are maybe feeling tight, but that we then can walk into our respective meetings, whether it be at the company or the town, and say, look, you know, the, the number of brains sitting around this table, who all care? There's not a lack of care, oh, that's a stupid idea. There's not that kind of a sentiment about something as important as the fire services in this town. Then we all at least think that this model is worth being considered. And I think it's much stronger, much stronger argument to say that the select board, finance committee, and the company, with whoever we're talking to, are thinking that this type of an approach makes sense. Whatever, fill in the blank, what's in the brackets of this type of approach. But then we're all speaking in one voice to the respective constituencies that have to ultimately say, okay, write the lease for this amount, you know. Okay, we'll sign a lease for that amount, because we know all the due diligence and the thing. But we all can say that with one voice, and I think that's very important.
And here's the funny part about the whole thing, right? When Frank and I were in the finance committee, we were like, why do we give them $36,000? And everybody's like, because we've always given them $36,000. We're like, but why? What does it do? What are they doing with it? Where is it? It's sitting. So now, because, and everybody's like, why are you opening up the can of worms? But now that we've opened it, we have some more information. Sure, really, there's $150,000. And if we hadn't asked that first question, we wouldn't be sitting here. So even though originally it looked like, oh my God, you know, the town's getting involved, I think this is why we talk about joint meetings, really doing our due diligence, small meetings, and why the finance committee really wants to be partners with the departments. Because we want to understand what you really need, so you don't have to spend all your time on the things you don't want.
You guys need not to be.
And this, this is a really good example of that, right? Sean referred to like, everything's down, what's wrong with them? I'm just saying. And now it's like, oh my God, look at it. So, I mean, it's a lot more, but it's a place we all need to be at together, so it's a good thing we open a can. Thank Michelle for.
People need to think about what happens if you don't have it.
Yeah, absolutely.
They don't.
Right.
It's really.
Do you have?
Let's compare schedules.
I, I, my schedule is pretty.
And, you know, thank you for your service, I mean, anything else you guys want to?
Okay. That would be great.
Whatever, whatever you want to give us, we would love to have it.
Yeah.
I, I also think that there's, there is around the table, I mean, we don't have the firefighting experience, of course. That's not.
I know, it's dark.
We don't have to sled them, right? I just.
Three years, no.
Mr. Gavilino.
But together, and, and you don't necessarily understandably, my son's a first responder out in San Diego. And, you know, there's, there's.
Very lively.
Very lively.
Very lively.
I won't get into all of that public meeting, but he's, you know, there's, there's different skill sets that we all have. But when I heard that you guys are spending hours and hours and hours and hours, and weeks figuring this stuff out, and because of that, you're not thinking about how do we deliver the service better? Because there's just so much bandwidth, or so limited amount of bandwidth. That's like, wait a second, it's all messed up, and it's all upside down at some level. And really, you need to be out there thinking, how do we deliver the service better? How do we get to calls better? How do we have staff better? How do all the other things that we were talking about, and develop our staff and training? But together, working not in opposition of each other, but working in teamwork, then we can harness Frank's skills and everybody else's skills at the table, and Rogers, and I'm not leaving any of you all out, and Justin, who's not here today, but how do we harness everybody's skills to help solve this for the town? And present the town something that is doable and makes sense, and hopefully they don't walk out.
And by the way, I want to put on the table again, just so you all hear it, that I, I think there is a role play. I personally, I can't speak for the board, right? But from my perspective, if we had a, a secretary of some kind that's working in town hall, and some of their hours are devoted to administrative work at the fire company, that seems an appropriate thing to me. I don't know if it's legal or what we would have to do to do that, but.
It's the support.
But, I, yeah, but like, the one way to do it is through volunteerism, but the other way to do it is through direct town support of some kind. So, just in your consideration, think about how would that work? Would it work for you? What would the need be? Are we talking about two hours a week, 10 hours a week? Like, we can only meet it if we have an idea of what it is, but just, I'm pretty sure there would be support for that. So, if that would be helpful, think about how it fits in the equation. Because I, I think it'd be great to find volunteers to help you out. I also think that the town administrative support is something the town is in a position to think about providing. It's a reasonable thing for us to provide, if it would work for them.
But I think we have to look at all solutions. I'm a big fan of seeing the tax, right? I wanted to say one other thing, and do I have this right? So far in this year's budget, they're asking for about 166% increase?
But that's not, that's not what they're asking.
Oh, because it looks like the five-part compensation has doubled to 156.27%. Yeah.
Well, that's, that, there's the operation cost and the labor.
Yeah. I'm just letting you know, right? Like, that is probably the largest increase any, and, and once again, it's not a no. I'm just giving you a perspective of why we're coming at it this way, and also very large increase.
Looking at the scary numbers for the fire department budget, you know, I'm going to put on the table that idea of phasing it in, and you know I 100% see the reasons for it, and the need for it. But looking at the, the amount of budget increase this year, and not just for the fire department, it may be, I'm going to call it strategic to phase it in, so that it isn't all in one year? Or is it so much in one year? And you're, now, maybe next year will be as many.
Or depending on me.
And I, I recognize the concern that you have a supportive set of boards this year, and you're concerned you may not, but I, I think that it's likely you will have support for this next year. I, I think that there will be supportive boards next year. So, so I just want to put that out, and I know, I know why you're resistant to it, and I get it. And I know that sometimes a small amount isn't enough to make it feel like it's a significant change. I'm just trying to figure out how I'm gonna, what I can cope that pill with when I'm selling it to the taxpayers.
I go back to 150 perhaps a little bit, I don't know what number, what did I give you? What's the number?
131.
Thirty, a hundred.
That's, that's, I think, that's exactly it, that 150, that's a great, right?
But that's for the lease, that's, I don't think that's for the.
Well, get you to the 140, so 200. I, I'm not saying that's the number, I'm saying that's a great approach.
You've got three moving parts, you've got the operational costs for the fire.
That's what we'll.
Yeah, we, we, let us get together, and we'll share.
Thank you, Frank and Roger, for taking on this awesome role.
I know that Peter has something he wanted to ask.
I'll surprise everyone with my comment, and I'm sure Sean will be surprised as well. Because I've been badgering him for a couple of years. I see that the second most expensive thing in the capital expenses is heating. And the town has $15,000 of ARPA funds to investigate how solar panels on the firehouse in the pavilion next to the three-phase trunk line that goes through town on Route 23 can alleviate some of these costs. It's not the time to go into details, but the Renewable Energy Working Group takes this seriously and would do anything that the fire company or their select board authorizes us to do to come up with real proposals. Just want to say that.
Yes, that's why, that's the.
Considering that sum of money.
And looking at systems across the town that is a really.
Considering that sum of money and not taking into account the infrastructure changes that everyone is looking at over the next decade or whatever, and not taking whatever steps are economical and appropriate to see that some of that energy is created where it can be on the premises. That's all I got to say.
A lot. You know, and Peter, I think one of the things you should know from the finance committee, the finance committee, as we go through all the department budgets, we're looking at all those things. Where are your energy bills? Where are your mowing bills? But what cuts across the town that could be a solution that might not, not just for the fire department? So, if you have any ideas on how we can, you know, look at that better across all town departments? He is, but I'm saying, you're talking about reducing that with, reduce the cost of our department. I'm saying, it's, it's not just for the fire department, right? It would serve, might serve the whole town.
We don't know until we do the homework to find out what kind of system would be appropriate for that.
We're looking at a cross-cutting solution in those areas that may reduce the cost of it.
But we need to be, the select board, the fire company need to be specific about they, what they want our group to do with respect to that property.
As I understand it, at this time.
Put that on your work.
We'll put it on my agenda.
I think that's a great idea.
All right, you want to do?
List.
Wednesday, 17?
Wednesday, 17.
Okay.
And if we do, you don't know, we do shop on Friday. Yeah, mine's open too.
Okay, then they.
Because I'm away. So, yeah, I'm, I'm going to be in New York for the race following week. If so, maybe try to get.
Are we, are there anything, anything else we, well, they're doing.
Other than the scheduling of the meeting, are we, are we good?
Is there anything else you want to address, anything else you want to say?
What's the ultimate timeline, timeline?
Look at the budget cycle.
I could ask, but I think we don't want to be ahead of the budget.
Well, yeah, I, I think, you know, I was just sort of talking to Kevin, you know, I, I can get myself a bill twice a week, you know, and I can do the numbers, I can do whatever you need.
Is mid-February for a final?
Well, by February 10th, the town administrator proposes the budget to us. And then in February, March, all of us go through it and review it. And then in February, March, all of us go through it and review it and go back and.
I think middle of February, we can have a, a budget number.
Has to be done by the first week in April.
Yeah, no, but budget number for the lease.
So this will come up at, at the sooner town meeting.
No, no, what we're only going to do, what we're going to do, what we're going to do is, in the town meeting, we're going to ask to take the three warrants that were set aside for the fire company, and make them lease, convert that money to lease payment. So they, that money would be done in the lease, so they can make improvements. That way you would start getting your money sooner. So, we might sign that, you know, April first, and then April, May, June might be a different one, because that's where we have budgeted, and then July on would change. So we'll get into the nitty-gritty, and we do that. So then, you know, we go through the list, and then we're, we're just going to talk about it. You know, put those things on the wall, and what sticks, what sticks.
Right, so we basically have four big outcomes we're working on. The lease needed structure, the all-in budget, you know, what is the whole cost, and what are we looking at to think about? You know, then the out years would be the third thing, and then the use of the solar panels and that analysis. And that might include any other gives or takes in this conversation. Out years are like CapEx, they're the years past this year of the budget.
Yeah, well, they've already worked on some of them.
But that's when I took four items, not exactly.
Yeah, well, well, please, I have the capital budget from, uh, so we can add, add, put those into the list. There's a list there, and we just haven't gotten that, I don't know.
I want to thank you guys for all the effort you put into this. And I would love to get it to a place where that load is less for you. So, let's look forward to that, so you can go back to what you're supposed to be doing. And just, as you have those conversations, just think about, what could the town be doing for you to take that stuff off? You're like, we can't take it off, because no one else knows what you guys know, right? But if we can give you secretarial help, we can do that, but there might be other things you think of, right? So, we are willing to, to, to provide help, but you got to tell us what you need, so that we can do it.
The big key with that is the being the right help.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, you made.
Tell me about it.
That's why I give it a go.
And and you can, you know, you can even get help, with help might be also supervising that. Because maybe you don't have time to supervise the accountant, but maybe, you know, Jeff here, he'll just be fine, you know? Although, you know what I'm saying? Because you're getting help, doesn't mean you accept my help.
Our personalities. All right.
No, thank you, you did a good job finding, finding, you know, finding the answers to. Speak a different language.
There have been in many towns.
Yeah, and Roger's ego wasn't affected when the fundraising lady did worse, right?
I don't think that is wrong.
You know, we have, you know, three shifts a day.
You're not looking at half, because I was hoping you would blow up.
Uh, yes, the meeting is adjourned.
The joint board is.
I think raise it all the time.
The joint meeting is adjourned, and the select.
Well, no, I, yeah. So let's back, we're back. Oh. Is that a side respect? Look at, look at, right? No, but what I'm saying is.
So I, I imagine you can find your email.
So, this is the year's budget.
Email's an issue because.
I'm not delivering any, I'm not having a meeting. She didn't have the big notes, like, over meetings. There was, but it was fire department, so show you the fire department's budget, not the government. You got one minute for whatever you have. I am, okay. One agenda item that we had was percentages, so, you know, I can change the, like, four, but then just take, um, you know, C O A, right? So, right, this is the format. So what I'm proposing, and I did it on fire, is. Column here, and column there with the percentage. That's the amount for what you do, that's why I was going to say, oh, so we started. So I'm going to, uh, cut that one to Melissa, so we're working. I'm sending you that question, I move that every time on every department. So I'm not delivering things to structure items, and I'm not asking for policy amount. Okay, that's one.
That should be.
Yeah. Three years. All right, so that's what I wanted to show you.
Sticking with the, uh, conversation about fire, or since this was a conversation about the fire department and everything, I do think that, uh, that the numbers that they talk about, and the numbers that we actually contribute with, uh, with our dollars, specific, uh, on a monthly basis, as well as what they've been talking about transferring those capital dollars back into the budget, I think it's actually, uh, a easier, it's an easier answer than people are making.
This year, this year.
Every year.
Really?
Yeah, no, I, I, no, I know, I think it's, uh, we are. But I think that just looking at the fire budget.
That's why I wanted all-in budget.
Yeah, I think that there are.
I have no problem with that.
But I think that, um, there has to be some, you know, my opinion is that there has to be some responsibility on the part of the fire company in, um, in, uh, in this.
Some skin in the game.
Exactly.
I couldn't agree with you more, which is why I said we need to have the books open, and we need to know things. And I think that goes exactly to Peter's point.
Yeah.
Because as I understand it, that could be a huge boon to them, I don't want anybody to hate, but that could be a huge boon to them, but Sean thinks it's a fire, a fire risk. That might be or not, but then there's a fire risk to everyone that has it. So those kind of things, I think, need to be assessed, and that might be the give and take. You didn't want solar, but now you take solar, that serves the town, and we, so I think everything is, you know, and and I really want to raise issues about, like, can we have a, you know, like, a line item tax? Or even on the, you know, the tax bills, you want to pay an assessment, you want to pay a hundred fifty two? I love that number of, you know, one.
Yeah, yeah. If you say, give me a donation, people are like, you know what, I just donated to all these other places, I'm not donating. But if you say, here's an assessment on your tax bill, and it goes specifically here over to the fire department.
That's what, that's what I'm saying.
That might be a good idea.
So, Roger, I love.
Because you won't get a hundred percent, but maybe you'd get.
Well, and part of it is the explanation. I mean, we have this transportation, people really don't understand how much the town, and and we'll talk about that, I'll read them. But I love the way you're thinking, and I love that skin in the game concept. And I love that you're looking for openness and transparency, because that's the exact trade-off. That, that's where it started with the lease, why do you need to know what we're doing? So you saw when I said it, even Sean was like, yeah, we were mad, but look, but look what it opened up. You were mad, but we're now, right?
And I think there's skin in the game, they, they need to figure out. I, I think that in my conversations with them, uh, and that Kevin has been a real positive for them.
Oh, yeah.
He's able to, to communicate. I think there's skin in the game, needs to be somebody, uh, there are a lot of people in town who I'm sure do it, is in their own fundraising. Because I think that's where.
Yeah, you can't expect a ten thousand dollar state rose to support the fire department.
But you understand that there's no reconciliation, like, my credit card didn't go through with Trump, like, I needed to put the fixer on it. Call me, I thought I paid for it, you checked me in, my name was on the list. Like, why are you not telling me? How many other people? Simple administrative work like that. Yeah, right? Why would I have, why would my name be on the list if I didn't pay, and then you didn't get my money? It's dark.
Their ten thousand dollar rows, plus their thirty thousand five dollars, five hundred dollars in donations, is almost fifty thousand dollars right there. And we can give them over fifty thousand dollars a year, so it's a hundred thousand dollars.
No, they're saying, aside from what they're raising, right? Okay, I thought that's what he said.
Fifty thousand away is what they're saying, thirty thousand.
No, they're, they're, they're saying a hundred fifty, they're still a hundred thousand away.
Well, no.
No, that's not what he said.
No, no, you have, you have to listen to what they're saying. They're, they're using, just to kind of, they're, they're using numbers to, to, um, to, uh, they're using numbers to come up with other numbers that are like, this, this would be great if this happened. So they're like, if everybody gave two hundred and fifty thousand dollars times the hundred and some odd people. It was, and that's twenty, but if everybody gave a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it would be this, which would still be good.
No, I understand, no, but but what they did say was, we think the number, right now, not the hundred fifty, they said, we think the difference of the rent of this to that is a hundred forty-nine.
No, that's, that's not what they're saying.
They only think it's fifty thousand they need? The budget request.
Two different things.
No, just answer my question, Roger. How much money do they think they need from the town? We, someone just asked the question, they said a hundred fifty thousand.
No, 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 that's not what they're saying. They're, they're saying that, they're, what they're saying is that if we charged everybody.
I, no.
No, 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 I, I know, they, they haven't said how much they want to give the town, they haven't said that. They didn't say that at all. Those numbers are just, wouldn't it be great if?
Susan asked outright, what range are we looking at?
And they, they, they're like, one hundred and thirty would be the hundred and fifty.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so it's about a hundred fifty, but you're saying you don't think that number's right.
It's not they don't think it's right, I just think that that is a number that they're saying, which is great, that's fine, it's just like saying, well, what do you want?
Well, right, so that's what, that's all my question was, what are they saying?
It's like the landlord, they're, if you think of them as the landlord, not as the fire company, that's why I asked my question earlier. It's because on one hand, we're talking to them as the landlord, right?
They own the building, kick them away.
One second, one second, one second. On one hand. On one hand, they're the landlord. On the other hand, they're the fire, the fire department, okay? The fire services, that's why I started using that word, services. And it gets all conflicted. As a landlord, they're saying, gee, you know, it'd be great if we had a hundred and thirty thousand. I won't quote about the twenty, it'd be great if we had a hundred and thirty thousand, which means that we really need to double your rent, or whatever it is, whatever the math is. We need to really increase your rent, because that's what it costs us to do the improvements and all. The point is that we get, that we, we confuse the running of the fire services for this town. Unlike police services, which are incorporated under the town umbrella, the fire services.
Why does the compensation go through our budget then?
The, the, well.
So I don't think you really get, I, I don't think it's a good analogy, Jack, the compensation goes through our budget. So you can't say it.
On the one hand, they're talking about rent, that's a landlord.
Right.
If we rented, if we rented the general store.
Right.
Then what's it cost the town to put two offices in?
There's a number, what they like and what's possible.
And that gets confused in the conversation, with the ability to provide services to the town. Right? Because those may be two different things.
But there's a third thing there too, we own the equipment. So if we didn't service them with that equipment, they couldn't do anything, all this stuff. I mean, do you know what happens when I go to other towns and I, oh, how did you afford that truck ladder? Why are you spending that? You could afford S B V, because look at your fire trucks. I'm like, that's why we can't afford S B V, but you understand, we have been very good to what they ask. So the real question is what you're saying, what is really their ability to fund us? How much do they really need? What is actually, how much is to build more? Because, let's be honest, if, if we're, they can take a, uh, they can take a hundred thousand dollar mortgage and pay, you know.
They, they, they have almost four hundred thousand dollars left for the fourth.
But you understand what I'm saying, they own the building outright. The all, sole answer isn't, isn't levy, levy, levy. It's just not.
That's not, that's my, that's my thought. It may be that, that there are lots of partial solutions that all together form one solution. Like, maybe you take the mortgage out for a hundred grand.
Well, we don't call them partial solutions, we call it their, their.
They're elements, they're building blocks.
Yeah, we call it, there, there, there's, there's a, uh.
My point is the, it's not a one, it's not a one element.
That's what I'm saying, skin in the game being.
Just, just increase the levy. No, it may be, there's three to four things that need to be done, and that will solve it.
That's what I said about the three-pronged approach, right? It's going to be some things the town gives them, some things they fundraise and they do, and some other kinds of in-kind, in-kind support. That's what I'm saying, skin is a game, mortgage, we chose skin in the game, a huge ways.
And that building, I think between the two, I think between the two, uh, funding mechanisms that they have right now, which is us paying, uh, lease there, and them doing some fundraising, I think there, it has more than what they can.
I'm not sure the fundraising.
He's saying it's up to fifty grand.
I love it's up to fifty grand.
Fifty grand, you know? They somewhere salary, well, that's why I want to see.
Anyway, are we adjourned?
Yeah, we're adjourned, it was on the seven. I want to actually see what they spend the department, the company money on. But you know what I'm saying, Roger, I don't know what they spend the company money on, or how much money is in the company.
Well, that, that's, they're, they're public, so they can do whatever they want.
But that's what I'm saying, but if you're asking us more, what are you doing with what you have? That's the transparency, goodbye.
So I'm going to turn this off.
Caller O two.
Thank you, thank you very much, caller O two. We, we, we all, we all, we're adjourned, all in favor?
We're adjourned.
Aye.
But I will say, oh, we all, um, so we, we should start with another meeting.